See directly.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe. See directly. Thank you, sir. He got it to you before the meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Can we stand again?
Yep.
Go over again.
Can we stand for the salute, please? I would like to advise those present that the notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular Board of Commissioners meeting of Thursday, May 11, 2023 was given by publication of the regular monthly board meeting. Notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger as a public notice on Tuesday, May 2, 2023. As notification to the general public of the meeting and sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, May 2, 2023 with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Department and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, May 2, 2023. I direct the meetings, I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Director Volko?
Anthony Forbes. Andrew Piscato.
President.
Aaron Lewitt.
Here.
Barbara Reyes.
Here.
Michael Russo.
President.
James Sanford.
Here.
Erica Seitzman.
Here.
You guys got me as president, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Shayna Walker. I would just, I would just like to remind everyone and anyone who signed up to speak, you have five minutes to speak. When you are within your one minute, Erica will let you know that you have one minute left. And I ask that you all be respectful of the board, the commissioners, as well as the staff of the housing authority. I would also like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and it is also on video. So just wanted to let everyone know.
Hi, my name is Shayna Walker. Yeah, I live at 501 Marshall Drive. Yeah, I just want to talk about, I had a party for my niece in my house on Saturday?
Saturday.
May 6. And the park is always locked. Why is that park always locked? And the kids can't go in, they have to climb over the gate. And she got a big bump on her head on her birthday party to climb up. She said fifty people had to climb over the gate because the gate was locked. I sent them all outside because it was nice that day. And I said to them, say they stay in the house. I said, go to the park outside so I could see right the park out my window. So I'm like, they came back and said, Diddy, the park is locked. I'm like, so why is the park locked on the weekends? Why? That park needs to be open every weekend for the kids. The kids are constantly climbing that gate, getting bumps on their head, climbing through the little, the little cracks or the little creek wherever they can get it open at. That's, and the rats. I can't, I can't. They're chasing us home.
Yeah.
Literally chasing us home. That garbage in front of 501 is just feeding them. It's feeding them. That's what they're doing. And then my friend that just moved there from Jersey City, she just moved there, she lives into, the rat was in her car in the exhaust pipe. She took it to the auto shop and they said, oh, there's a rat in here. It's ridiculous. It's very ridiculous with the rats. And then the garbage, compact room, compact thing. Every time I turn it on, it's full to the, ah, that they have to put garbage bags. Like, I don't like it. I don't like roaches, I don't like mice, I don't like none of that. I don't want none of it. And we complain all the time. And I have people call. But thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Director, can I ask a question?
You may.
Why is the park closed?
The park is closed because there's a tripping hazard in the park. There was vandalism done to the park.
What was in the park?
And, yeah, there's vandalism done to the park.
Guys, guys, please.
And the surface was pulled up. So there's a big section where the surface is pulled up. We have it under contract to be repaired, but it is a tripping hazard right now. So people shouldn't be climbing the fences or letting their children do that until we get it fixed. There's other parks that are open. Our other parks are open right now.
Guys, please, I'm gonna ask you some things.
The contractor has promised that before Memorial Day, it will be fixed and we can open it back up. Everything else is working, the water is ready to go, but we cannot open that back up until that is fixed because it's a liability issue with us.
And that's the park over on 5560 Marshall, right?
Yeah, no, it's the, it's the water park behind.
I think the park she's talking about is 501.
501, the one behind 501. Not the water one.
And so the basketball courts.
And that's the basketball courts. My understanding is that's open every day.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay, well, we apologize because I am told that that's open every day.
So we, we open.
Excuse me, guys, guys, this is not a bad advice.
Yeah, I can't take it.
I'm gonna ask you to please be respectful. We're trying to answer the questions and get your, your questions answered and your, and your problem solved. So please be respectful. Go ahead, Sue.
So the parks, the parks need to be power washed, not only when they stay open. You have people that shouldn't be in there using it as bathrooms. So we did have them closed until they get properly cleaned and disinfected. We did that process last week. We power washed the parks to make sure everything was cleaned up. So those parks are open. The only park that is closed is the water park until probably next week until the contractor comes in and does the repairs. But the parks, I work every other weekends. When I'm here, that park is open and I'm pretty sure my other supervisor makes sure that those parks are open as well. But we were working on them and we were doing the power washing, making sure that we're disinfected.
I thought, I thought that 501 park was open.
Yes, yes. We open one side, we don't open the other side. So we open the side where the basketball court is at.
Yeah, that's the reason.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So can we just make sure that that happens?
Absolutely.
And I'm telling you, because I spend a lot of time out there, my sister lives in that area, she has children in that area, and I have personally seen the kids climbing the gate.
Thank you.
And it is, it's a problem. It's not a problem from this year, it's a problem that has, that occurred last year as well, and I think it was brought to this floor. So I think it's really important. And I also think it's really important for us as a housing authority to communicate with our residents because what you just said, Sammy, that the park was closed because they were in power wash. I know us as commissioners were informed last, last month that they were going to be, that they were going to be power washed. At no moment were we informed that the park would be closed while this was happening. So it's important for us to send flyers to our residents to say, guys, please understand that the park is being, is closed, but it's closed because of this, not because someone's not opening it. Okay? I think it would, it would stop all of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
And I would just like to emphasize too, I think many of you have my cell phone. If you find one of those parks are locked, please call me directly. Please call me directly. My understanding was that they're open, so we apologize.
And the rats issue, the only thing I can say is it's a citywide problem. We're working with it, we're working on it, the city's working on it, and we're trying our best to stop it. We do need the residents' help because I know what happens. I live here, I see people, there's a garbage can, it's empty, and they will throw the garbage on the floor next to the garbage can. So you guys don't want rats, you don't want them running in the streets, and we're not helping the situation by throwing it on the floor. So we can always say, what is housing authority doing? We, the residents, have to take pride of where we live and what we do, and we need your help. But if you see someone throw the garbage on the floor, say, excuse me, can you throw it in the garbage? You're right there. It doesn't, it's not gonna hurt you. So I ask, I'm telling you guys as a resident, not as a commissioner, because I don't like rats either. I know when I see it, I pick it up and I throw it in the garbage. But again, we need your help. We need you guys to also help us. We cannot only, we don't have enough maintenance staff to go around eight hours a day to pick up garbage that people just decide to throw on the floor.
Make sure, make sure you tell them about the scum that won't let you in the building.
They know.
We're having that for dinner.
Patricia Waiters.
For quality assurance purposes, five minutes. I wanna time myself. Let me just say this on the record. Division between our communities will not work with Pat Waiters. Feeling uncomfortable in our skin will not work with Pat Waiters. Stereotyping the HHA residents will not work with Pat Waiters, okay? I'm gonna continue to speak up, be a voice, and be there to help this here. Tonight, I brought the facts, and what a mysterious thing, Frank isn't here. He was told to me, stop making allegations and make facts. He had tried endlessly to divide me and all of his management. And it's sad, I have not spoken to Ms. Stight since my mother passed away, who was very close with my mother. So I'm gonna tell you the seriousness about joining together and sticking together. We do more as a team than letting people individually break us down and feed you a few crumbs and throw those crumbs in your face and you still living like garbage. Tonight, if you notice Ms. Stightman's face, a smile was on her face because she knew the deal was already cut because she had the majority of the vote. That is why every time somebody gets sworn in this housing authority, I'm gonna come down here and it's like spitting in my face. You might as well call me the N-word and drag me and hose me down because you have not given me the opportunity to come and serve these people of the housing authority. You are taking a known disregard looking this way. I've got facts that's so disturbing right now, I've got letters, and I promise them, I don't want them to lose faith in me because when they come to me and say, Patricia, help me, I promise them I'm gonna be discreet. When they get back out and say, well, Pat said this one, they should automatically know it was a lie, up until today. Up until today, and you remember this day. This letter here put the topping on the cake. This is how I received it for the last 15 years. Somebody put, give this to your mother, put it in my daughter's windshield. Patricia Waiters, May 6, 2023. Okay, since y'all think I don't have facts. This person is talking about somebody paid money to get in Fox Hill. They want their money back, they're being distraught. And then it's sad is, listen, y'all told me the list wasn't being tampered with, that's one. We not giving hope on you, Mr. James, and I just told you, Andrew, outside. Y'all, please keep helping us because this not gonna be hopeless hope. We gonna get to that point. It gets better. Follow up, 525-2001, Ms. Steadman, Ms. I can't pronounce your last name, Erica and David. Here's a complaint. All of these here, and you better take care of it because I'm gonna give all of y'all a copy. Complaint after complaint after complaint after complaint, but they're facts. After I did my due diligence, they was facts. I voted the governor. I voted Governor Lieutenant Governor Oliver when you got your seat and out appointment because the white people on the housing, on the co ording thing, like you said, tonight, the council people said, she don't got our vote. Tell Ms. Stightman, don't worry about it. The governor's office knew nothing about it. But Jen and all of them said no, so you knew that they, you got your seat. Tonight, again, when Andrew said no, you was like this, relax, like it's gonna be, yeah, I got the vote. Bigger than that, I'm saying this to say this. Evidence don't lie. Money wasn't exchanged. Here's a picture, Mr. Reco. This young man blacked himself out. I'm writing this in hopes that you can help me. This is very disturbing. I gave money and my voucher up to move into HHA. Okay? Y'all want facts? But I'm not giving you my facts and my ammunition to put in your gun and shoot me. This'll come out in court. I'll deal with you in court. For all of you. It gets better, baby. I'm gonna wrap it up. For all of you that knew the late Betty Moore and the late David Little that moved here in the 60s, my Uncle Davy, my mother, my mother's apartment, they using this, as Frank said to me one night, he walked out the door, you don't wanna go there, we got dirt on you about your mother's apartment. I'm sharing this with y'all tonight. For you that don't know, these are green certified receipts. The housing owed my mother $27,000. They was draining my mother on her dying bed. And now this here, follow up from the 2021st, Mr. Reco, I gave you all of this, but instead you made me an enemy. You accuse me of calling you a drunk. You accuse me of calling you using drugs. I don't play games like that. I'm professional. I'm concerned about the quality of life. You tampering illegal with the list and you repented of going and retaliated against my daughter. Wait, it didn't begin. Wait, don't interrupt me, I have my minutes left. Oh my gosh. I'm sorry. You retaliated against my daughter, which was in full compliance. I got every sheet in here, she did everything right besides give you money, and I don't have it to give. And I refuse to. And Mr. Russo, you should know very well, there you go, very well, what went on in church towers with the same mess. I'm not having it. I'm closing saying this, I'm depending on you, Ms. Commissioner, that got reappointed to the chair. Those four numbers you gave me for hard, here it goes, fraud unit, guys, voucher unit, complaints, I went to North, 1 North Center, Room 1005, Raymond Boulevard. I did all of this, but you the one put them, Michael Russo, put them here. I'm serious, let's start. The same way y'all did Carmelo Garcia, let's start. And I have your paperwork here too from June 10. When you voted, you was gonna step down and they swore you in tonight. I want answers for this too, from you. Thank you.
Patricia?
Yes, ma'am.
I know there's no back and forth, but I think we had this competition earlier today and I'm just going to reiterate it. I respect that you say you have all this evidence, and if you do, I am asking you, and I have continuously asked you, there are proper channels to file these complaints.
I did.
Okay, that's fine.
I did.
And there's also the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office where you can contact them and provide them with all that information.
Barbara, I did.
Once that information gets down to us, we'll let them do the investigation and we will handle it from there.
Okay, and for the record, during my process, it says the chair and the commissioners. My complaint starts with you. You can't take a known disregard to it. The same way they did Carmelo, you gotta file a complaint, this boy. So when you taking money for each other's campaigns and y'all playing politics, that's why you playing his ass whoop.
Patricia, with all your respect, I am not, I am not a polit-
Barbara, you know where I'm going with this. Not you, you just became the chair, but don't say I didn't follow your channel.
Patricia, I respect you, but what you just said is very disrespectful.
All right, not to-
I am not an elected official. I've never tried to be an elected official, have absolutely no intention of being an elected official.
If this shit fit, I'm not talking to you, Barbara, again.
No, but that's not what you said.
Okay, I'm, I'm not taking back what I said, but there are people that took money.
Patricia, have a good night and we can have a conversation later.
Yes, we can, but I did what you told me and they said you.
But we need to be respectful and watch our words when we speak.
Okay, I'm telling you again, you gonna, I'm gonna accept, I'm telling you, accept my apology because you never ran. The people know who I'm talking about, so don't act like it's non-existent, okay? You paid into campaigns, okay? Mr. Reco, now I said the name, you happy?
But you-
Not you, Barbara, okay, so we can't erase it.
I'm not making accusations with our public.
All right, do you feel better? I just said it ain't you. It's, I said his name, okay?
It's about being respectful to this whole-
How is it respectful? I got my campaign reports.
It would be disrespectful to you if we-
Now you, now you putting them in the, like, I got campaign reports. I got campaign reports.
And asking you again in public and the public record. Please bring all that information-
It's him.
-to the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office if you'd like. I can call for you.
Please, yes, okay. But just follow up, say follow up because I went already.
You will file them.
I'm gonna do it, I already did it. You still gotta follow up as the chair, Barbara.
I will follow up when I receive the documentation of an-
Okay, and I'm gonna give you a copy of mine tonight.
And that's right.
Okay, all right.
Your copy is given, but I will not respond until the-
They will, it will be done. It will be done.
Thank you and you have a good night.
Okay, you too.
Patricia, Patricia.
That's your paper.
Oh, yeah. You know, they can't though, I follow political. And I'm not political. See, facts hurt. People getting more, it tells on itself.
I hold it, um, brother. Any color.
Guys, I'm gonna ask you to please be respectful when we were speaking.
You gotta give respect, Barbara, too.
I do give respect.
Okay, go, all right, go, go, go.
I have always respected everyone and anyone that has come here.
All right. But the truth do hurt a little bit, I'm wrong with that.
It doesn't hurt me.
No, not you. If it ain't you, don't, I'm not applying to you.
Thank you, Adrian.
$10,000, $5,000.
Okay, so I did notice there's a resolution to enter in the shared services agreement with the housing authority of the township of Arlington. Why? This is my current rent statement. This is not a receipt. This is not a receipt.
Thank you.
This is a receipt. This is what we should be receiving on a monthly basis. If we do not receive a rent receipt, it is against the law.
I can't have them talking in this audience.
Guys, if you continue to speak, I'm going to ask the officer to remove you from the room. I cannot have the back and forth while we were speaking.
Tenant advisory, the resident advisory board and the tenants association used to be public. Now it's held it privately. I don't agree with that. We need to open it back up to the residents. They need to be able to say and do whatever it is to be done. The housing authority's resident handbook, I've sent emails and there still hasn't been any correction to it. So I found my much better copy of Public Housing Rules that was sent around to every resident, which is readable and it explains everything a little bit more clearer. Frank has a copy and Lores has seen the copy and the director was supposed to get a copy. I have something here that the residents should get. It is, please mark the box that best describes your home today. It describes each room, kitchen, bathroom, do the burners work?
What, do the burners work?
Do the burners work? Does your kitchen have a working toaster oven or an oven? And there's all things circle. It's like the residents are doing an inspection and exactly letting housing know what is wrong. This should be handed out to residents on a bi-weekly. Even bi-weekly or monthly because there's always something going on, always something breaking in someone's apartment or something happening, and it takes housing forever to get things done, which I read in the lease, it should be 24 to 48 hours or 72 hours that it should be completed. It shouldn't take weeks or months to get anything fixed or taken care of. And saw a kid earlier this week playing with a rat, maybe housing, yes, he was taking it with a stick and throwing it up. I yelled at him, I told him to go home, wash your hands, stop playing with the rat. But we need notices to go out. Explaining the dangers, there was a notice a couple of years ago about skunk and how they're part of wildlife, and I have that copy as well. Maybe housing can do that with the rats, just so parents can know what their kids are playing with outside. Although if, because the city and housing is trying to control this issue. I said trying, ladies, it's really not happening. Let's try to keep the rats out of the buildings instead of, you know, then we can keep them outside, but they shouldn't be in the buildings. I saw a picture of one sitting outside, someone's compacted, and it was horrible, so.
Michelle, is that?
Hi, Michelle St. 320 Harrison Street. L-E-S-S-A-N-E. Good evening, everyone. I have a question. She mentioned the handbook. It says in the handbook about be courteous and peaceful to your neighbors. Well, I don't experience that. I have numerous of time, I keep calling my manager. I understand kids play. I know what kids play and what kids don't play. I mean, it's, it's out of the ordinary, like they outside. This is what I've been experiencing for almost two years. And I have reached out to my manager, I have put complaints in, I even called the director. He thought everything was fine. I said, sir, it is not fine. I mean, my kids are wearing headphones and stuff. I don't think y'all wanna live like that. Why should I have to live like that and I have to wait and I have to wait and I have to wait? And it's not fair to me. I have health issues, they saying that kids, I'm a disabled resident, just because y'all see me out here moving around doing stuff, y'all don't know the pain and stuff that I go through at night in my body. Right now, I'm hurting, but I don't think I should have to live like this. I'm living through hell. I have recordings, I was gonna bring it to let you guys hear this doggone noise that is from six, six o'clock in the morning, it used to be 5:30, now it's six o'clock in the morning, running through the house, bouncing basketballs and stuff. Like, come on, there's days that my kids wanna sleep and they can't. I get up because I'm in pain, I make me coffee to try to make, do around my house to make it easy for me, but it's not fair. You guys have to implement something. If a pay, if you getting constant complaint about somebody, something should be done. I gave the lawyer the paperwork with a threat to the guns, okay? My son didn't wanna file the charge because he didn't wanna go through paperwork with his job. I mean, who wants to go through paperwork over lies and stuff? But this is actual truth. Like, what more power do you need for this resident that keeps giving me and my kids help? The whole building is scared because they don't wanna get confront, she's very confrontational and which I don't care about being confrontational because if she want the butt whip, she could get it. But the thing is, I shouldn't have to go, I shouldn't have to go through this, I'm tired. I, I, I see, I called Barbara, this is another issue. I called Barbara, I'm like, what am I gonna do? This girl floods my bathroom. She flooded twice last, no, actually, three times last month. I had to go to South Carolina and go take care of my mom, right? And my kids are calling me and I'm actually seeing water coming down the ceiling. They wanna fix my bathroom. Why fix my bathroom if, if she's gonna keep flooding and she has no consequences? People tell me, I don't know what I'm talking about. I know what it got done for her. I recorded her with a snake, her own snake, in the tub, trying to get the clog out and it was no, she didn't work. So when housing came, when I called about the flood, she had a clog. Like, she should pay the consequences. You keep flooding somebody's house, that's disgusting, rats, roaches, or I'm on the first floor. What y'all think gonna happen after a while? What's gonna happen? All these floods that keep happening? Like, I think something should be done. And I talked to Mr. Lewitt, y'all, the other day. I said, we would like to meet with y'all, the resident advisory board, would like to sit down with y'all commissioners one night when y'all get a opportunity, let us know. We wanna sit down, we wanna, this is gonna be a team effort. It's not a me effort, it's a team effort. All of us come together. And I told Ms. White, all of us come together and it's a community thing. It's a community, it doesn't matter what color, what race, whatever, it's a community thing. How we can make everything better. Let's sit down, have discussion, no one's no better than nobody. If you making it, good for you, I'm happy for you. One day I'll be there, who knows? But at the time being, it's all, it's an effort that we all have to put in, and I am tired. I don't have, wanna come to this meeting no more. I have all my proof, I have everything. So my next thing is a lawyer. Because if I'm going to a lawyer with all my stuff, he's gonna take my case because I have all my stuff. I have waited and waited and waited. I'm tired, I'm fed up. Now, I'm already, my daughter was on medication because she can't rest, her nerves is bad, anxiety attack. I had to call the cops. My daughter having anxiety attack while I'm talking to the cops. That's not fair because this girl is always with some nonsense and nothing is being done to her. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Just a minute, gotta wait till my scooter. Gotta wait till my scooter, right? P.I.Z.A.R.R.O., Pizarro. L.Y.A.D.A. Hi, my name is Linda Pizarro. I live here in this building 221. I want, well, mostly everything I had to say was said. However, I want to reiterate about the rats. Horrible, I don't want to go down to my daughter's building because they even, I had one run across my scooter. Actually, run literally. Ran was going so fast that he got scared, I guess, and jumped on top of the scooter. It would happen so fast, I couldn't even do nothing about it. I just, I was in shock. But it's a bad situation down the other end. We're not that bad, me over here, but it's really bad down the other end with the rats. And something needs to be done. I don't, I know that's your fault, Mr. Reco, I don't think you brought him here, however, somebody needs to take him out of here. You understand, something needs to be done because I've never, I've lived in here, I've lived in the housing authority, well, not in the housing authority, but I've lived in whole Bogan for over 50 something years and I just look good, but I'm really old. But I'm old, I'm over 60 something years old. I just look good. Let's get over that. But the thing is that, yeah, the rats are getting really, really bad and too many people are saying something about me complaining and they don't even know where to go. And people are even asking me as a former commissioner, like, what are you doing, what is going on? You haven't been involved in a long time, you need to do something. A lot of things in the housing authority are getting to the point where they're really, really bad. They are really, really bad. The conditions of the housing in the park is horrible. The park behind the four projects, I don't understand why nobody don't do nothing about that. I can't even understand how that park has been like that. You know that. Yeah, I know you're shaking. It has been like that for 17 years. Don't act like it just happened. That park need to be redone or shut down. It needs, something needs to be done about that park. And not only that, the noise, like she, like Poki just said, I, where I live here in the senior building and the noise, some letters need to go out with the people. They got mental issues and they need to, you need to do something about it. Because they are banging, banging, banging with hammers. It is ridiculous. I don't know what their mental health is, but they need something to be done. With the banging, with the moving of the furniture, with the noise, with the smoking of the weed, enough is enough. Enough is enough. I haven't, no, I haven't really complained, but I'm just like Poki, I'm very dumb, I'm very smart. I got recordings, I got pictures. Come on. I'm telling you, something better be done to the conditions of the housing. Somebody need to be held accountable for this though. Managers are not answering phones. They are not taking complaints. They are never in the office. They can't be reached. The rent are not being calculated properly. Enough is enough with this. Y'all don't want me back involved. Tell them, Michael. They don't want me. If you don't know, you better ask somebody. You don't want my mouth to start opening again because I was on every TV, every newspaper, everything back in the day. I will write federal complaints, I will get government down, Michael, am I telling them right? Don't, you don't want this. But enough is enough in the housing. The conditions are not good and something need to be done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mom.
I can, thank you. And a number of these issues are addressed in my report tonight. Want to update you on the special capital fund grant allocation we got for Harrison Gardens. They're underway through our engineers right now. Our first step is going to be looking at closing off the courtyard to make it accessible only to residents. We do have defensible space funding under design behind our buildings from 208 Harrison to 400 Marshall. That is under design right now as well. This will separate those areas from each other to stop pass-through traffic behind those buildings. We are applying for a special security grant from HUD that was just announced, maximum of $250,000. We are going to focus on security improvements around the Marshall horseshoe. We can use more fencing off around those playground areas with key card access around Marshall and possibly an idea of designing a key card access for entry into the street. That horseshoe issue, which is our street, it's not the city's street, that horseshoe issue continues to be a problem back there. A big problem. Management staff and the Fitzpatrick Law Firm are holding a special strategy meeting next week. We're going to be reviewing all pending eviction actions, seeing where we are in all of our eviction actions. These will be for non-payment and cause evictions. Some folks mentioned some eviction actions tonight. We're going to make sure we're on top of all of those with our law firm. We do expect a number of court actions to be filed very soon after that meeting next week. We expect to begin the installation of additional lighting as funded by the CDBG grant. The equipment is, they promised, they're promising us the equipment is almost here. As soon as it's here, it will be, start to be put up. We'll light up our darkest areas and provide supplemental lighting over at our basketball court. So we're gonna light up that basketball court and those common areas much, much brighter than they are now. I will be holding a round of director meet and greets at all sites in June. I welcome you. Please come to the meet and greets. When we come there, we often get 10 people, 11 people. Let's get 20 people, let's get 30 people to those meet and greets so we can go over these issues and your problems in that forum. We have time there to talk through all of them. On the Hoboken Housing Forward, the planning group chosen by the city is working away. We expect to have a community-wide meeting in June, so keep tuned to that. We're gonna be having a community-wide meeting to bring all of Hoboken, but particularly residents, our board, et cetera, up to date on where the redevelopment plan is through the city. So we'll be back to you for that during the month of June. Staff and legal counsel are working on a capital needs RFP that will define our capital needs as we go forward with redevelopment. HUD has also advised us that we need to expand the scope of that needs assessment to cover the HUD's technical assistance grant services we've been getting. They're telling us that at some point in the not-too-distant future, our HUD technical assistance grant will expire. That means we're gonna have to take over that cost. So we're gonna put out an RFP for those type of consulting services. We've got it under draft now with the legal department and with our enterprise partners. That's right.
If you are having side conversations, I ask you to please stand out in the hallway.
Responses for our RFP for special legal counsel for future development have been received. The procurement committee met last Monday. We are going to be interviewing our favorite firm to confirm some things with them next week and we would expect that a recommendation on one of the two firms that proposed will be back to the board in June. And RFQ did go out for pre-qualification of developers. Responses are due back on May 18th. In accordance with our procurement policy, I will be appointing members of an evaluation committee. I'll be publishing those names next week, no later than the due date for the applications, for the proposals. I'll send out that correspondence to all of you naming who's gonna be on that selection committee and that committee is expected to meet before June, but I wouldn't expect them to have a decision before June because there's gonna be some interviews that go on, that the committee is gonna have to do a lot of work. I've also managed to get commitments from a financial council, Lisa Petrowski, that we've used to be an advisor to that group, that knows the development game very well, and Mr. Wilson Henry Ellis, that a couple of you have talked to in the past. He's a high-ranking HUD member and the regional side will be an advisor to that group as well. So we're gonna have some, some good advice on that group as it moves along because this is the biggest decision this organization has had in front of us and the most exciting thing that we've had in front of us for years and is the real answer to our maintenance problems out there in the long run. We continue to meet regularly with the enterprise partners and we're beginning our work on our management needs and positioning to after redevelopment. We're drafting a revised procurement policy and that should be to you very soon. On policy and outreach, last month, we gave you our latest newsletter. If anyone has an article they'd like in the newsletter, tell us, we'll get it in the newsletter for you. We'll make sure something gets in. If you know something that should be recognized, if you know somebody that got that special birthday, something happened, their kid graduated, got their law degree, whatever, let's, let's bring it on and we'll, we'll get it into our newsletter for you. We expect that in June, we'll have a, another Hall of Fame honorees. So we have started to send invitation to some prospective honorees and again, anyone interested that knows somebody that should be honored to go into the HJA Hall of Fame, please contact us. We'll, we'll reach out to them and try to get them here. I mentioned earlier, this emergency safety and security grant for a quarter million. We're gonna go after that real hard over the next few weeks. We are looking at publishing a design RFP to redesign our website to provide easier access to information. We're getting more and more complicated on our website. We started to roll out the resident portal, we're starting to roll out the ACH debit where folks can start paying their rent online. Things are getting more complicated and we need to update our website to go along with that. I continue to meet with residents one-on-one on a regular basis. We probably do a 10, 15 a month. Please come on in if you want to meet with me one-on-one, but we need to make that appointment. So come on in and see me. If you've got issues, if you think there's an issue, come on in, we'll sit down and talk in my office. The renovation work is almost done on phase one at Fox Hill. Kitchen cabinets and countertops are in a punchless process. We are working with our fee accountant and identifying the next phase of work at Fox Hill and we should be able to talk about that over the next couple of months. The garden at Fox Hill is planted for spring and growing season. Pretty exciting to see things growing out there. Housing for Hoboken is meeting on May 16th at 7:00 PM next Tuesday. We'll be updating the trustees on the redevelopment project. Our special capital projects is a main entrance and gate replacement at the courtyard, as I mentioned earlier. Courtyard paving, security cameras at each floor are gonna be coming to Harrison Gardens. Each floor, not just front and back, but every floor and the stairways. Hallway and stairwell refurbishment are part of that as well as REACT issues that came up. Laundry room equipment was expected in April and again, beyond our control and we really apologize. It's not our fault. The old service provider refused to remove his equipment. We've had to give him a legal notice with a deadline to remove his equipment, no later than the end of this month and we should have the new equipment in for you. Knock on wood, I hate to make promises, but I think we can make this happen during the month of June. Security system upgrades are in design. This is CDBG funds. Thank you, city, thank you, thank you. This is gonna be infrastructure because our switches down in all of our basements are over 10 years old and they need to be replaced. Emergency generator is in process. Monroe Gardens boiler replacement is in design. As I said, for a couple of months now, we did have a large UPCS and REACT inspection. Thank you, residents, for having our inspectors in, taking a look at your, at your apartments. All emergency issues identified have been addressed. We are working through items that are possible to repair on a weekly and often weekend overtime basis. I really appreciate Sammy and his crew, they're putting in extra time to get our REACT scores up. We found five particular areas of repair that we think we can get through before REACT inspection. We did find a number of sprinkler head damage within the units, that's number one. We're gonna be going through, if there's any paint, please don't put any paint on your sprinkler heads, don't hang anything from your sprinkler heads. We're gonna do replacement on all damaged sprinkler heads. We found many interior doors that needed to be replaced. So we're gonna go out with a separate contract proposal to repair interior doors throughout the entire housing authority. We've got significant plaster work that need to be done. We've got kitchen cabinet repair and food replacement and window repair. So we're gonna do some separate contracts on these. We're also having the maintenance staff work overtime as they can and as we have that bandwidth, but we're gonna need some outside help to address these this spring. Those are the five areas that we found that are really in need to bring up our REACT scores. Frank Merchant isn't here today, so I'll give his report. His daughter's got prom. So, attachment one is our vacancy report for public housing. We continue, and I'm really proud of this, a 96% occupancy rate in April. And that's management and Sammy and particularly Jackie. Where's Jackie? Did she step out? Of course she would, right when I was gonna frag on her, right? Because she's running our vacancy turnover crews. Keeping up at a 96% occupancy rate, again, HUD standard is 95%. My goal is to get us up to 98% and we're gonna be close in the next couple of months. Fox Hill is also at 96%. We had one move-in, two move-outs and one transfer within Fox Hill this past year, this past month. We are continuing to work on tenants' accounts receivable issues. As noted, we're gonna be meeting with Matt this coming week to restrategize. I think we're almost to the point where we're gonna be sending some notices out. We have, we have talked and talked and talked and brought people in, renegotiated repayment agreements, so I think we're gonna have to get some people's attention through doing some legal actions to collect our rent. On housing choice vouchers, I am really pleased about this. After a number of years of trying, we finally got the state Veterans Administration to give us backing to apply for veterans or VASH vouchers. I'd like to thank the councilman for help with that. So what that means is now we can apply, alright? Not in the bag yet, but we can apply. I think there's a great possibility we can get them with the backing of the statewide VA administration. So we'll be submitting that application in June and hopefully we'll hear soon and hopefully we'll hear good news. And that also impacts on our work on our project-based voucher request because that may well have an impact on what we can do with veterans as well. So we'll keep you apprised of that as that moves forward the next couple of months. Maintenance, our staff continues, and I know it's rough out there, but they continue, continue to do work orders, day in and day out. We will be headed in position to the maintenance office staff. We are going to move our work order call-ins back away from the manager's office, back to the central number at Central Maintenance. So we're hoping to see that improvement for you in the very, very near future. If you know somebody that needs a job, have them come and see us. Somebody that has those skills to answer those questions, work in that maintenance office. Fire department inspections are going on, thanks to the fire department. They come in yearly, do our inspections, make sure our doors are closing properly, making sure everything's working well. As we mentioned earlier, our playground areas have been power washed and disinfected. The water park is currently closed due to that vandalism, but we have contracts that have it repaired and based on the comments, we will make sure that those parks get opened every day. Catch basins, all housing authority catch basins were cleaned and vacuumed out over the last couple of months. We got a couple of folks that we really appreciate. You had to move your cars for the day because we had, we had to have the big machine in. But in the long run, it really pays off to clean out all of our sewer lines. So thank you for bearing with us during that one day. If you'll remember, it seems like a long time ago, but we had a huge storm event here in Hoboken and it really affected us. And I'd like to thank the maintenance department again. Our basements were flooded. They were flooded and a number of our boilers were flooded and no one lost heat overnight. No one. We got in here, we had boilers down. By the end of the day, all the heat was back on and a number of boilers were working to get steam back in. We had our pumps going. Our maintenance department came out and took care of that boiler supervisor, Greg, and his right-hand person, Louis DePran, along with our plumbing staff and Sammy, they just did a great job. We're all here working away. We are currently accepting applications, remember, for additional building maintenance workers and some full-time mechanics. We had another mechanic plumber leave us this past month, so, and he was an ERP as well. So we have some new people coming up through that system, but we're always looking for talent. We are bidding out work to provide a regular four-month cycle of floor stripping and waxing. Those proposals are due back at the end of this month. Our building maintenance crew under Joe has been performing a deep disinfection and painting of all of our compactor rooms. This hits upon the rat issue too, which I'll talk, the rodent issue, which I'll talk about in a minute. But one of the first steps we did, among many things, is to go into our compactor rooms and completely disinfect them and repaint them so they would be bright, shiny as the, as the trash comes... trash comes down, we can challenge our folks to keep them that way, because that's one of our first lines of defense in road and control, is we can't have any trash lingering in our compactor rooms. Now, that also affects that whole system. If people are putting trash down our trash chutes and they're stuffing things in there and they're getting stuck and the bags are breaking, it causes trash to come out, so please help us. If you've got trash and the elderly's that are too big, bring it downstairs, all right? Or call the maintenance, we'll bring it downstairs for you. Don't just put them in those rooms on the floor, right? If you've got to stuff something in there, please don't pull that handle down so far that it breaks, because that needs to close and latch in order to keep the rodents not to come up. Our trash chutes, our trash chutes are 70-some years old and they're lined with brick. The brick, over time, has nestled and changed. It's just great for those little critters to crawl up those, right? They're not steel-lined, they're not nice stainless steel-lined. The critters can crawl up, if those doors aren't closed, they get in, right? If you do see one of those that are not working, please call it into us. If those things don't close and latch, now I am challenging my staff, which I'll mention in a moment, to do more inspections on them, make sure they're done. Our cleaning guys, if they see one, should be reporting it right away. But also, we need you, right? Because like we've said, a couple of folks here, it takes all of us to make this happen. So let's keep that going. We continue to work on emergency preventative repairs due to the age of our buildings. I did Attachment 3 on maintenance plumbing projects, and again, I'll just mention that this is above and beyond. This is a lot of work on that funny little attachment of our guys that are fixing split sewer stacks, that are fixing plumbing supply lines that are breaking, that are causing those floods from one floor to another. Our guys are out there working on those things and making that happen. We had one at Adams this year, this past week, that went from the second floor all the way down to the first floor, a complete vertical split in a sewer stack that was leaking through there, and there's many of them that happened. We're on it. Howar Storage Tank is being replaced at CCG on Monday, so we're going to have some water out at Christopher Columbus on Monday. So we expect no water, we got notices going out, we expect no water from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. No. Christopher Columbus Gardens.
9th Street.
9th Street. And then from 12:00 to 4:00, you'll have water, but only cold water. Extermination issues, I know we've talked a lot about it, but we have been performing our weekly inspections. We had a meeting with our exterminator last week, we had a kind of a summit meeting with our exterminator last week on what we could possibly do. We've been going around about a weekly, about a weekly basis and filling holes. We're now going to be going around about every three working days and filling holes. They just keep on coming up. It's amazing how many holes those critters can dig in a week. Now, we have also worked out our system with our extermination, perform a procedure in each hole as it's being filled back up. There is a gas you can put down, it's CO2, and there's also some what they call tracking powder that can be treated in each hole. So we're going to be doing that procedure from now on with our exterminator. We have over 30 bait stations on the exterior of our buildings, 30 bait stations now. We've just ordered 10 more bait stations to go on the exterior of our buildings. Those are checked and cleaned out twice weekly, so we're attacking it that way. We have an intensive campaign of permanently sealing any access holes within our buildings. We have been in all of our basements, going through, finding any hole where a rodent can come into the building, or go from one building to another, or go from one area to another, we're filling them with concrete. Now, this is 70 years of jostling and holes and pipe chases that go through, we're sealing off all of those. There's an enormous amount of basement areas, but we're searching for any access point that's a half inch or larger, we've closed up hundreds of those so far. We've sanitized and painted each of our compactor rooms, as I mentioned earlier. We have increased the number of trash bins around our sites. We haven't come up with any wonderful solution on our trash bins. We made more of them, so they're not overflowing, but we still have trash bins. And we have our folks going around closing them, folks coming around and opening them, throw trash in, and yes, the rodents are going to get in there, but we keep at those, and if we know an area where we see it overflowing, we will get more trash bins there. We did talk about trash chutes, we're going through a special procedure on all our trash chutes, we want them to lock, and we do know it's a Hoboken-wide, and we will continue to do all we can to eradicate. We understand it's frustrating, it's frustrating for us as well, but we just hate to see it.
Director, if I could jump in and just interrupt you for one second? You know, I just want to say, just hearing the frustration from everybody here tonight, right? I want you to understand just one thing. So you come to us as a board of commissioners, and you express your frustrations. We in turn look to the director to help solve an issue. At the same time, we have those same, very same frustrations, and I'm actually going to use you as an example here. I happen to be the councilperson that represents Commissioner Seitzman. She is dealing with a rat issue that is extraordinary on her block. It's frightening, right? And she comes to me and expresses that same frustration that you're expressing here tonight. And then I in turn look to the city to help to solve that situation. Director Reco turns around and looks to the city to help to solve that situation. This is an ongoing issue, and we are truly doing everything and anything that we possibly can. We're changing strategies, we're using new technology, we're using different bait, we're using different means to eradicate the rodents. This is just a long process, but it's important for you to understand that it doesn't just stop here, right? We go through those same frustrations, all of us. We all have those same conversations with our own representatives, and then in turn with the city. And believe me, the city has reached out to the county to help. So this is a multi-level type of a situation where we're doing everything and anything we can, but we do hear you, we understand the frustration. It's not just about the rats, we hear and understand the frustration on a lot of the issues that you brought up here tonight. But sometimes, it doesn't get solved overnight, and sometimes we ask for a little bit of patience from all the residents. Believe me, I just yelled at one of our directors in the city to try to help to solve the situation. She's under the same pressure everyone else is, so I'm just asking for as much patience as you can give us. We want you to come, tell us what your concerns are. That's how we know, but we can't solve it overnight. It's just not going to happen, but we will continue to do everything that we can. I can promise you that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, very frustrating, and again, we're as frustrated as you are, but we will not stop. We are doing significant resources and we're working with the city. On finance, our 2022 audit is underway at the office, we've got the auditors in our office. We did an update on our monthly statements, we did send those for the first time out in March. Overall, a couple glitches, think it went well. We have been spending extra time with residents, if you need an explanation. One issue that has come up, Ms. Rollins brought it up, is an immediate receipt to those that choose to pay their rent at our walk-up window. So when you get your statement the next month, you get that, that says what you paid and what your balance is, but some folks want that immediate. Other folks just drop off their rent and they get mail that receipt later, so we're working out a way to give an immediate alternative receipt. Shouldn't be too hard.
Director, why did that change? Because that was happening.
Well, the system of sending out a statement, right? So you send out a statement, and then you know how much you've got to come in and pay. You come in to pay, and it gets registered in our system, and at the end of the day, the computer system adds everything up. It doesn't get posted until the end of the day. So when you're at that site, it doesn't post until the end of the day when it accumulates everything.
But is that a new system?
That's the PHA web system.
So that's not the same system that we've been using when the writing stays?
That's right, the old one, before the COVID pandemic, when people used to come to the office and they would get that printed out? No, that one accumulates, this one accumulates on a daily basis.
Director, do you mind? Could I ask?
Not at all.
I want to ask the residents actually a question. Is the concern that the overall statement may be wrong, so you want the individual receipt of the payment?
Michael, it's not, it's the understanding of what you owe and what you don't owe. It's different amounts on different things.
So for residents, it's more difficult to track what?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to understand the situation.
But seeing, sometimes residents don't get it, a lot of people don't go to the mailbox, am I right? They don't go there. Like most of, I'm a little guilty on that too.
I get it, I just wanted to understand the benefit, so I think internally, we could probably help to solve that situation. I think the director's kind of hitting on that a little bit right now.
I think there's two things that I'd like to do immediately. One is, I want to make sure at our meet and greets, we hold a class on that. And second, I think we should do an explanation video on our website as well, and I think we could do both of those things fairly soon. One, in person at the meet and greets in June, and the second, kind of an overall explanation video slash education on our website, and I think that will go, I think that will go a little better for you.
And just having managers available, too.
Absolutely.
You can do all that, you can do all the classes, you can send out the notices, you can put it on your website. Sometimes you just don't feel comfortable unless you're personally speaking to someone who's in charge.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Not only that, the statements that are given to us, there are times where one month is eliminated from the statement. I already had that issue twice. Went back to September, October wasn't there, but November was there. Then it was printed out again, November was there, October wasn't there. So there's a problem with the session.
We're going to work on it.
You know, but I, just like when you go to ShopRite, you get your receipt handed to you after you exchange money, we need that back to us that same day.
Thank you. We will work on that.
Thank you, Director.
We will work on that. Let's see, where was I? I'm back on track, I'm back on track. Contract management and publication of RFPs and RFQs for our finance department, and we hope to have that direct payment method out soon. Just got a couple little more glitches and we'll be there. Daniel, Resident Services?
Director, before Daniel, this is Resident Service Report. I just have a few questions concerning the report. So you stated that we're going out for the funding for security, correct?
Yes.
Is there anywhere in that funding where we can hire someone to manage?
No.
So can we look for funding, a grant opportunity?
I've looked everywhere. If I can find one, I'll apply for it.
Because I'm all with the cameras, I think it's amazing. We have amazing, we have an amazing camera system, I'm pretty sure the police can tell you, but that's not the point. The point is, what good is the camera system if nobody's watching it, and the only thing that is being used is because something is happening, and then we're going back to the camera system. If we can catch it in the act, a lot of the stuff that's happening would be an enemy.
I would say that we are probably going to need to hire 15 people to catch things in the act. We've got 300 and some cameras. How do you watch 300 and some cameras?
But at least having one person dedicated specifically to that, because when you have managers who are handling leases, all these issues that all these residents have brought up, they're handling all of them, and I'm being totally honest, how do you expect the managers to also do the cameras and do the same? It's hard, because if you have five, sometimes I see seven, eight people, eight clients a day, the thing wonders, the amount of time you're spending with each client, you can't determine that. You can't say, I'm going to give this resident 15 minutes and this one 30 minutes, because they may need 40 minutes for you to explain what they're saying. So when you're putting that, you're putting that back on the managers, I could also see how it can't be done. It can't, there's no way, with everything that we've heard here tonight, there's no way that they can do all of that and look at cameras and identify the problems, it's too much.
One of the things we are doing is taking away their maintenance duties, we're going to be taking away their calling duty, should give them more time. What we have asked them to do is about an hour to an hour and a half between the management and the aide every day, between the manager and the aide. Now, I don't believe that that's asking too much of them to see if there's a major problem that happened, because you can fast forward numbers and go through them pretty quickly, but again, with 350 cameras, it's hard to see everything. We really rely on this system for either reports that come in from the police or reports that come in from tenants to say, look, at midnight last night, something happened. Can you look at the corner of Third and Marshall? That's where we are right now. Having said that, I would love to have more people to look at them. I agree with you, Chair, I'd love to have that, but this grant will not do that, they will not pay for staff. This is physical improvements, money.
Then my next question to you is about the lighting. I know you spoke about lighting, that we have identified some issues.
Yes.
I know I have gotten several people who have approached me about lighting in the basketball court. During the day, the lighting is amazing. At nighttime, and especially if we're going to have our leagues there this summer again, we need better lighting in there, there's not enough lighting.
I think I mentioned in my lighting section here that basketball courts are...
I'm sorry. Stop the yelling from the audience, I have the job to do to take these people down. You have to stop yelling.
I did mention in my section that the basketball court is something we're focusing on, so you're going to see that when the equipment comes in.
Does that also include the, can we look at how much it costs to either repave that or to fix the cracks in the basketball court?
Sure.
Because I know that the Boys and Girls Club did not want to have the games there last summer because of the condition of the courts. So that might be something whether we have to raise money for them, or if you can get together like a budget, I'd be more than happy to see if we can raise money to get that done.
Sure, we'll be glad to look at it.
Or if it's possible in a budget to actually get it done without, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll be glad to look at the repaving. I will also call Gary over at the Boys and Girls, because that's not what he told me as to why they didn't have it, but that's another story.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, I missed the, did you say that the reason why Gary and the Boys and Girls Club had games at the court was not because of the cracks in the condition of the court?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what Gary told me, but I don't know, we'll have to check back with Gary.
Okay, all right, yeah, sounds good.
Question?
Sure.
Eric, do it. Okay. The session aids, will we be able to designate some to Mark Vilmar, who wants to build Veterans Housing?
I would not go there until we do a possible RFP that might need to be done, if you follow me. We are in data's territory if we pre-designate the funds that they give us. We may have to have an RFP process.
And this is where Veterans Housing was built, and there's a parking lot alongside, and we want to, I think, 16 more units.
18.
18?
18.
They're letting it go through the process.
So I will say there's a strong, strong possibility, but I would hate to say that and have the horse get behind the car.
Yeah, listen, I think it's safe to say that any veterans organizations in the city of Hoboken who are building units for veterans will absolutely qualify, and we will love to work with them.
Very well said.
And that's a really important thing. I'm sorry, Director.
No, no, please, thank you, that's what we're here for, it was a great meeting, so thank you. Mr. Daniel, are you here?
I was waiting for more questions. Oh, now we got a lot for you.
I am going to be very brief. On the resident service, I just want you to go down to event highlights. We had an amazing meeting, second meeting with the city of Hoboken today on our Southwest Festival. We met with Jessica and Ruben. This is a collaboration with the city of Hoboken, Councilman Ruben Ramos, the Hoboken Housing Authority, and the Hoboken Business Alliance. This is going to bring a stage where you're going to see our local talents, right? We're going to have some amazing food, we're going to have a video game truck for our teams, right? We're also going to have an obstacle course, there's going to be a lot of games available and a lot of activities. This event is going to be held June 3rd from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It's going to be on Jackson Street between Second and Third Street. That's where we're going to have all of our events, we're going to have some ice cream as well, for those that love ice cream, some pizza, some hot sauce, some burgers, music and fun, so we welcome everyone to attend. This is going to be our festival for our award, bringing the entire city of Hoboken together. So Hoboken residents, Hoboken... So Hoboken residents, Hoboken Housing Authority residents, please come out for this event. June 3rd, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. here on Jackson Street. Connect with members. And also, just to finish up, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothership.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, I just want to add that Councilman Ramos drives a hard bargain because he spoke to me at length. And because of his advocacy, I committed to him to donate $1,000 to that event. So I have to give Ruben all the credit because he would not take no for an answer.
Okay, that's my man.
Director, Erica has a question.
I just want to say that we brought the woman from the Flow Initiative, so we're going to try to...
Guys, let's get off, please.
Apologies, I'm having some allergy attack. There is a woman from, her name is Erko, from the Flow Initiative. So we're trying to bring women's perioded products free all over the campus. We took a tour with Danny. It's taking some time, but they should be here in the next three months.
Nice.
And you said what products?
Flow.
Flow. Flow Initiative.
I just want to say on top of what Danny said about the events that are happening, I just want to let you guys know that Hope's are having two events. May is Community Action Month and as a, as part of Community Action Month, tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., we are having Senior Game Day at the Roosite 301 Garden Street. If anybody needs a ride, reach out to me, text me, call me. We can have the drivers pick you up and drop you off. Again, that's from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then on May 25th, I believe it is, we are doing our children's game day. It's going to be on the Mama Johnson Field from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The Hoboken Police Department has actually come on board with us, so they will be part of our event. We hope to see everyone there. It's a free event, everyone is invited. And again, it's not just for Housing Authority residents. If you have friends that are from the city, please feel free to invite them so that they can come down and join the party. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I hand the meeting back to you.
Resolution. Resolution number 2023-05-01. Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve the meeting minutes for the April 13, 2023 monthly board meeting.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 2023-05-02. Resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, I just have one question. How are we making payment for the travel arrangements for the conferences? I'm just curious, is that on like a housing credit card? My question pertains to like, are we getting rewards points and travel points so that we could use those to offset the costs and some of these things? That's just one of my questions. It's curious.
Amel, you want to take that?
The payments are being made through a housing authority. It's similar to a credit card, but it's called a procurement card. We are not allowed to have a credit card, whether it's a store card, whether it's a Home Depot card. So we, back in, let's say, 2014, went through the state and it's backed by Bank of Americas. So we do have a credit line on that procurement card, but we can't sign up for, for like a Sheraton credit card or anything like that and potentially get the rewards.
Understood.
It is called rebate that is provided at the end of the year. But that's how all of these professional development purchases were made, a step forward.
Understood. Thanks to you. Thanks. Got it. Thanks for explaining that. Also, can we just, when we put it on the list of bills or if you could just send out an email explaining which commissioners or which staff are for the actual travel arrangements? So I would be curious.
Sure, we can get you that detail. It's no problem.
Any more questions, Andrew? Andrew, is that all?
What was that? Did you hear me?
Yes, we heard you. Amel answered and said he can get you that.
Any other questions, Andrew?
Usually not.
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Appistato. Director?
Andrew, Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-05-03. A resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken designating signatories with respect to private bank.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
Would you like to, do we need to revise this resolution similar to what we did last time?
If we want a belt and suspenders, yes.
So the belt and suspenders, as your father always advises, we will say that Barbara Reyes is now the chair and Erica Seitzman is the vice chair. And we will adopt this resolution first as a changed resolution and then we will vote on the resolution.
So an amendment to add those two names and then vote on a motion to amend. I make the motion to add both those names to the resolution.
Okay.
Very good. Any discussion?
Yeah.
If not, Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman? And now I think we vote on the resolution.
Yeah, I'll know as amended, correct.
Any discussion? Vote. We need a resolution.
Second.
Discussion? Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
I do.
Michael Russo?
Yes.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 2023-05-04. Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken designating signatories with respect to PNC Bay.
Chair, I make a motion to add the two names to the resolution.
Second.
That would be...
The chair and the vice chair?
Commissioner Reyes as the chair and Commissioner Seitzman as the vice chair.
Correct.
Motion and second.
Very good. Are we ready for a vote? Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew? We lost Andrew? Andrew? Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number...
On the resolution, as amended, now there will be a vote on the resolution as amended, correct.
Any discussion? Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes. Resolution number 2023-05-05. A resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to extend the contract for the provision of the delivery and pickup of steel roll-on and roll-off trash containers.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Fairly standard. Thank you. Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Resolution number 2023-05-06. A resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for computer maintenance service.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Resolution number 2023-05-07. A resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to enter into shared services agreement with the Housing Authority of the Township of Irvington.
Motion.
Second.
Director, do you want to explain a little bit?
Yeah, I can.
Guys, please, side conversation.
HUD has a rule that we commonly refer to in the business as piggybacking. That if this housing authority has done a fair and open RFP or RFQ for services and we chose a certain contractor, that another housing authority can what's been known as piggyback on our process. So they can then say, if we allow it, that they can, in essence, piggyback on our process and say their process is ours and it's legal for them to hire that firm.
And we don't pay them, right?
No, no, there's no money exchanged.
Right, right.
No money exchanged whatsoever. It's just that they now can legally, according to HUD, hire that firm. And we did this a little while ago with the Fitzpatrick Law Firm. So Irvington could also use the Fitzpatrick Law Firm. And the director of HUD, if you know Irvington, has been taken over by HUD. The new director of HUD, Newark, contacted me and asked me if we would be open to having the Irvington Housing Authority piggyback on our contract for Joe Manfredi for special legal services. And I said, sure, we'll be more than happy to do that. So that's where we're at tonight. It's really, to my mind, a formality. Allow them to piggyback on ours. We've done them a favor and life is good.
And if I may, as Commissioner Seitzman touched on, there is no money exchanging hands between the authorities. The result, if you were to approve this, would be a shared services agreement between the two authorities, largely to protect the Hoboken Housing Authority. There's an indemnification clause that Irvington Housing Authority would indemnify you should there be any issue as a result of that. So it's essentially to protect in large part the Hoboken Housing Authority. And then the Irvington Housing Authority would enter into an actual contract with the firm themselves. So you would not be a party to that contract between Irvington Housing Authority and the attorney of the state.
Good, understood.
I just want to state, I do not agree with the practice of piggybacking and that is why I will be voting no on the resolution.
That is why?
That is why I will be voting no on the resolution.
Anything else? Anthony Forbes, Andrew Appistato?
Andrew?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?